Can I ask a question about page 11 in the packet? It just looks like there's several clerical errors between the address. 3246 is what it's showing and then also under ownership, the box might be checked incorrectly. I just want to clarify that I'm reading that correctly and whether that would cause any problems because it sounds like we're trying to bring this up to standardization with the adjacent properties. If you look on page 11 in the packet, the address which we've already established is listed incorrectly as 3246 Leeson and then also, uh, I can't count the one.
It's number five applicant information.
Right, yeah, and it looks like the box is checked incorrectly. It says, "I am not the property owner" instead of checked beside "I am the property owner", which might also just be a clerical error.
Uh, I... Can you hear me? Yes, yes. Okay, I don't know that I'm familiar with everything, but it's been kind of hard to do anything with the apartments since, you know, they had situations going on with them at the time we purchased them and we're wanting to make some changes. Uh, we're looking at possibly a group home, some different things, but we would need the rezoning done before, you know, we could even consider that. And anyway, that was about all that I wanted to say. Is there anything that you need to ask me? Okay, that will be, there will probably be more apartments built there. That is the plan. My son Rick, who had originally purchased this with my husband, uh, that was the plan at the time, that was back in, well, they were purchased in '04. Well, come '05 and '06, everything started to bottom out with building and, uh, so my son went back into nursing. Uh, this gets to a long drawn out thing, but that's why there was, uh, a space of time when really nothing was done. I kept the apartments going and kept them filled up. Uh, but now the plan is he's back into this area and he's going back into building. He's in the process today of getting his contractor's license reinstated. So that is the plan is fixing up the two buildings that are already there and to rebuild where the other one was demolished. Okay, my name is Melba Stalard. Uh, my name was also on that long at the time, but that's too long to get into. So I won't. So it's basically my husband, but he's heart of hearing, 79 years old and so on. So I pretty much have to do his part of things. Uh, but address presently is 7885 Laurelton Drive, Chattanooga. That's actually a rental property that I own, but we had come back into it to fix it up. I've had it rented out for about 12 years. And during the time we were back in it, the tornado hit it. So we've been in a lot of different situations. But my actual, what I count as primary residence is 446 Sandstone Creek Drive, Ringgold, Georgia. That's our main house. My son Rick is living in it right now and I'm in this rental property. No, my name is Melba. Melba is my husband. I know, and I know those addresses are crazy. They were when we purchased the apartments and have needed to be straightened out. Everything over there. My son. I can't hear. Yes. I have, I don't know. Oh, oh, just a minute, I didn't know what that is. Uh, at the time, the, um, one building was emptied because, um, whether there was a complaint by someone who actually had moved into an apartment that we did not rent it to her, but she moved in there. And so there was numerous problems and things that were torn up and such. So at that time, the, uh, city's bridge had all of them moved and that building was closed down. So while it was closed down, of course, then we had coronavirus and everything else. So it wasn't a good time to put people back into it. So that has been sort of on hold, but, uh, they did not want us renting it out until the electrical situation was straightened out. And what that is, I guess that these, prior to our owning them, they were townhomes. So the electric from upstairs and downstairs were connected together. But then whoever owned them at that time just separated them out into four apartments, which there's plenty of room for four apartments, large apartments, but they left the electrical wiring like it was. So we were not supposed to do anything until the wiring was straightened out for there to be separate meter boxes for each apartment. And there was four apartments in each building. So that was how that, that was, that we... I was at the meeting, it's a little bit hard to remember just exactly what took place, but it was going to need to be rezoned for us to get all of the situations straightened out. So... Having a hard time hearing. I didn't knock the computer, but I missed part of what you said. Oh, um, I'm not, I'm not completely sure, but my son is talking about doing that. If that was the final decision on what to do with the buildings that... They did stop us. Well, I don't know for sure what's going to be up there. Let's say it's okay with duplexes. Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's not...
Can I ask about how many existing units there are there? And if how many of those existing units are occupied?
Yes, yes. I know all about it. I took care of them for 14 years. Uh, there's two buildings, four apartments in each building, which makes eight apartments. One building is not in use because the city made us close it down. So it is sitting empty. That was just prior to COVID. Well, with COVID, you didn't really want to go pulling in renters. So that apartment has, that apartment building has been sitting empty since. Uh, we were told, well, the, all the renters had to move. Uh, you know, I forget just exactly how these, I'm pretty sure that is what they got written as 712 Summit. I always considered 712 Summit as the one that was torn down, but all the addressing there, the same way with utilities and everything, it has been one big mix-up, but that's how it was when we bought them. Well, it basically was vacant other than we used it a lot of times when, uh, I mean, I would furnish the people a lot of furniture and such, but as far as anybody living in it, it hasn't been since we had it. But I would use it, a lot of times people would leave, wouldn't take their furniture. So if they still had good furniture, I would store it up there and then let some of the else have it when they move in. Because I gave it to a lot of very low-income people and so I just always tried to help them all good. Oh, well, we purchased them in '04, so we haven't had anybody in it at that point in time. Prior to that, I don't know. But in my opinion, I thought they were in pretty good shape other than how they'd gotten run down right there at the last, but it was good wood all through there. No termites or anything that ever saw, nothing of that.
Yeah, I guess at least that. And we're, we're talking about, I'm talking about the duplex that was demolished.
Yeah, yeah. Now, let's make sure we're talking about the right place. The 712 Summit that comes in off of Summit Hill there. The duplex. Oh, yeah, I had them, I forget just exactly when all of that came up, but like I say, we had somebody that moved in there that we'd never even seen and it was crazy.
And if this helps, um, at all, I do have the GNS open right now. 3220 is the one that was not in use. 712 Summit was in use and 3216 was in use.
Yes, I just, for some reason, I just always call that one at the top, the duplex. I call it a 712 Summit, so...
Minas Stalard, you don't have any additional information about what the plans are for the property?
It will either be to go back to, uh, renting as apartments, but that is not what we really wanted to do. We want to change them into, uh, group homes.
Thank you.
Yeah, when you have people discharged from the hospital that, um, still need a place to stay, but they don't have family or people that would take them in, uh, that it, I don't really know how to explain it, but that would be their next step down from coming on out of the hospital would be to have a place to go. I can't hear. No, not... Oh, oh, no, not prison or... Could be there, I see what you mean.
And then it's, and then it still requires a use on the county council. Yep, the three home guys are providing that it's not a 501(c)(3). Then it does not require use on the...
It is all the time, and you cannot deny those, unfortunately. You can only deny one that's for profit.
I don't know that there wouldn't be some that was mentally challenged, that there wouldn't be any from prisons. But I don't know, I've worked in a hospital years and years and years, but I'm not really up to speed on this, this zoning and all this stuff. I just wanted to use the property the best that it could be.
Any question for Kenny? From sheerly a tax-based standpoint, since we currently have buildings on the property that are non-conforming with R2 and should have been zoned R3, would correcting the zoning to conforming R3 not improve the tax assessment for the city?
I'm not sure if that would capture that 40% or not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I think I'll look at this, a few different cases. Two of them that you have existing buildings on, and then one that is vacant lot. And then it's almost like these cases kind of should have been separated, especially since there wasn't a plan. But then one is going to be bringing in two occupancy into a conforming use. The other one is just a vacant parcel that you could decide to do whichever that you want. These were before the Housing Commission for some time as it relates to several issues with the property itself.
I have a question on that. If they can be, can operate as apartments the way they are now, you mean that we don't have to go in and have all that electric changed out and everything?
No, ma'am, that's not what he means. He's referring to the actual zoning itself. When it comes to other building law safety codes, you have to meet all those requirements to operate that type of occupancy.
Okay. But I don't think there'll be a problem about duplexes up on the hill there. Because I sort of think that was being considered anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. And Mr. Howell may be able to answer this for me. But since those properties were constructed, were they originally constructed as duplexes and converted at a later date to apartments? And that's the reason why the electrical is only designed for the two units? Okay, so it was an illegal conversion to apartments? I just want to clarify that, thank you.
Illegal. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, no. When did that be done?
Yeah, that's correct. We'll just see that recommendation or suggestion in writing from her for us to add it to a city council agenda.